Okay, welcome everyone. I Council President Walsh call the August 7th City Council Meeting to order. Mayor Polly has an excused absence tonight, so I'll be serving as Mayor pro tem. As a reminder, we continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings, so both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. We have several items on our agenda tonight, and we will have several opportunities for public comment, but we are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I welcome you to join me. Thank you, everyone. So the next item of business is special business. We've got ID 1503 Puget Sound Regional Council Vision 2050 Environmental Stewardship Award related to our Carbon Forest Credits. So I'd like to invite PSRC Executive Director Josh Brown and Parks and Community Services Director Jeff Watling to the lecturn.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having me here today, members of the council. I'm Josh Brown, Executive Director of the Puget Sound Regional Council, and I'm here to be able to share congratulations. So one of the things that we do at PSRC as the region's regional planning agencies through our Vision 2050 Awards is to recognize great efforts to implement our regional plans. As you all know, as we're developing Vision 2050, our transportation plan, our economic strategy, we're oftentimes looking long-term, over the horizon, the big things that we need to get right. But it's our member governments, our cities, counties, transit agencies, tribes, ports, other partners, that are the ones that are very much implementing those regional plans. And we have different categories for our Vision 2050 Awards. This is truly an implementation award. It's our on-the-ground category, which really recognizes great efforts to take those plans and put them into place. So what's being recognized? Well, the city's Carbon Forest Credits Program to support environmental stewardship is being recognized. And if you're not familiar with the program, this is a unique innovative way to generate revenue to support preservation and stewardship of urban forest lands. Something that will benefit Issaquah, benefit the surrounding areas, and benefit Western Washington and the region. So I want to congratulate the city for your fantastic innovation. Congratulations. I know, as it is with, you know, my case at PSRC, it's our staff that does an amazing job. So congratulations to your staff for all their great work pulling this together, and job well done. There you go.
Great. I think we'll take a picture.
Perfect. Okay.
Yeah, so I just want to take a moment and recognize how important this is. This was an activity that I know the council was all passionate about, but you're right. It really is about staff. And so I want to take a moment just to thank Director Watling for really seeing the vision of this and being able to push that forward. It's never easy to be innovative and to start something new and do something different. And the fact that our staff is looking out for what the community wants and taking the time to go that extra mile to do the things that make Issaquah just a thriving place to be, I think we have to celebrate. So I just wanted to take a moment. I know you've got a few things to say as well, but yeah, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you as well, council, council president, for those kind words. Council for your trust in giving this a go. As you know, this was a pilot project in exploring the carbon market. We don't do this without partners. The partners at City Forest Credits were sort of our nonprofit group that helped us navigate into the carbon market. That's not an easy market to navigate for the first time. Excited as we launch into our Urban Forest Management Program and our first Urban Forest Management Plan, taking a look at how we can take that pilot and what that might look like to replicate, either through acquisitions or through plantings. Also want to go back in time a little bit and thank you, council, for your courage to purchase Bergsma. This pilot was that acquisition. And so that bold effort that we took as a city to purchase that, align grant partners, our partners at Save Cougar Mountain, again, an effort to not only innovate with carbon in this market, but you're all innovators as we meet our environmental goals through acquisition. So thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Well, we don't get to toot our own horn very often, or even better, get a regional partner to toot our horn for us, so appreciate that. Yes. So the next item on our business is audience comments. Members of the public may address council at this time in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. And if you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand or send the host a chat message. If you're on the phone, you can press star three. If you've joined by computer or smartphone, one second, look for the hand icon. And if you're in the room and did not sign up, I will of course ask for speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. I'll also remind people, we have this opening portion of public comment, but we'll also have public comment after each of the agenda items. No? Not today. It's a regular meeting, not a... Okay. I apologize. I'm just appreciate our staff once again. So Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for general audience comments? Yes? Okay. So I'm just going to say a few more words and then we'll get people up. For those making comments, please direct comments to the whole council and not individuals. While this is not a question and answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, you can unmute your microphone for a virtual attendee or step up to the lecturn in person for the in-person attendees, and you'll have to press a little button to get the red light to turn on. State your name, address, and relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently, and limit your comments to five minutes. If you are attending virtually and do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed. You're encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Resident comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process, and the city takes the comments seriously. We thank you for taking the time to address us. So I believe the first person signed up to speak is Heather Clark of Eastside Mobility Coordinator for a nonprofit.
Yeah, and Council President, I don't see Heather in the audience here. We do have two members of the public on virtually, so if either of you are Heather Clark, please send me the chat, a message, sorry, me, the host, a chat message, or raise your virtual hand. If you're the person on the phone, you can do that by pressing star three. And the next person we have signed up for public comment is here in the room, Ann Fletcher.
Okay. Ann, if you want to come to the lecturn.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Ann Fletcher. I'm a resident here, 255 Southeast Andrews Street, Issaquah. Lived here for 35 years, and I'm also a facilitator for People for Climate Action. I'm here today to speak in favor of the Metro Flex On-Demand System, which is one of your agenda items. I brought something to show you, and if you'd like to take some of it home, you are welcome. The earth gives abundantly to us, filling our needs. How are we going to give back to the earth what it needs to sustain us? Well, we have an opportunity to improve that reciprocal relationship with the earth. Making our transportation system less polluting will help significantly. Reduce single-occupant-vehicle travel by making public transit available to underserved areas. This is a worthy investment in our future, and that's why I wore my... A pilot program to assess and build transit ridership is an important part of Issaquah's Climate Action Plan, as you know. So let's stop thinking how things might not work, and instead start finding ways to make them successful. Look at the cities that already have Metro Flex and learn from them what works. And let's have a city and community campaign to make this transition in our habits. It's not easy for us as human beings, but it's super important, and I think we could do it. It could be really fun. And People for Climate Action would like to help with that sort of a campaign. Having lived here for 35 years, I've seen that we've had many years of struggling to find solutions to Issaquah's unique traffic woes. And here is finally something we can do. The urgency of climate mitigation, as well as the practical benefit of reducing traffic congestion, leads to the reasonable conclusion to approve Metro Flex for Issaquah now, so that we can have it possibly starting as early as October. Thank you. And I'm going to leave those for you. You'd like some.
Thanks, Ann. Ann, Clerk, do we have anyone else signed up to speak?
No one else signed up, and I don't, I don't believe Heather was able to join us tonight.
Okay. Opening it up to anybody else in the public in the room who would love to speak. I know we've received several emails, so we let those speak for themselves, but... Okay, well, appreciate hearing from the community always, and in this case, speaking in favor of one of our agenda items, Metro Flex. As a reminder, you can always email us. Written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov. And the next item of business is the consent calendar. Are there any committee chairs who would like to report on any of the consent calendar items? No? Okay. So the consent calendar was distributed to council in advance. If authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payrolls been reviewed?
They have.
They have.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar as presented in tonight's agenda packet.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any council discussion at this time? Hearing none, the motion before council is to approve the consent calendar as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes unanimously. And the next item of business is regular business. We're starting out with AB 8624 Metro Flex On-Demand Pilot Program. And I'd like to invite Transportation Program Coordinator John Larson-Friend to present this item.
Good evening. Thank you, Council President Walsh. Good evening, council members. My name is John Larson-Friend. I am the Transportation Program Coordinator here at the city. I'm joined this evening by Meredith Sampson from King County Metro, as well as Brian Henry from King County Metro. This evening, we're here to talk to you about Metro Flex On-Demand Pilot Program. The purpose of our presentation this evening is we are seeking authorization of the proposed Metro Flex On-Demand Pilot Program. First, a little bit of background on our endeavors to bring some sort of shuttle or on-demand program to the city. The efforts to bring some sort of shuttle to especially Squawk and Talis neighborhoods has been going on for at least 10 years, if not longer. For our purposes tonight, we're going to start the timeline at 2017. That is when the city applied for the Community Connections Program. In 2018, Issaquah was chosen for this pilot project. A group kind of committee was formed, and an exploration was begun in early 2019 or late 2018. Late, in late 2019, Metro asked, basically, the higher-ups at Metro asked that group to reevaluate the data that they were seeing, just to make sure that Issaquah was good fit and that project was put on hold at the time. In early 2020, COVID-19 struck us all, and metro services were suspended. In late 2020, Metro announced adjusted priorities, and that led to, in 2021, metro announcing the cancellation of the Issaquah portion of that pilot program. So bringing us to that 2021 time... At that time, staff brought, at that time, staff brought this topic to council, and council directed staff to pursue the metro partnership even more. Around, at that time, the Transportation Program Coordinator position was also created to help explore that. After I was hired, we found out that Metro had put all pilot projects on pause until further notice. So between March and September of that year, we found basically three options: wait for metro, fund our own system, or some sort of Uber-Lift subsidized service partnership, which we spoke to them about. Mobility and Infrastructure Committee recommended that the city pursue metro for the pilot project, and that was because around that time, we started talking with these folks over here, who expressed that we might be in the running for bringing Metro Flex pilot to Issaquah. So this summer, June, July, we brought the topic to tab and mobility and infrastructure to consider the Metro Flex program. Looking forward, we know that routes 214, 216, and 217 to Seattle that serve Issaquah are going to be suspended due to driver shortages. That will happen in September. And then in October, hopefully, Metro Flex will begin service. When it comes to public outreach, there's been a lot of public outreach around this topic done. During 2018, when there was first exploration of this topic, there were some surveys that were put out to the Squawk and Talis neighborhoods, which returned these results. But the most significant transit barrier was the first-mile-last-mile issue. Just a reminder, first-mile-last-mile is that first or last portion of a transit trip, and is often a gap, and therefore a barrier to ridership. The top three things that would help folks get around using transit is a transportation service when needed that connects to transit or local destinations, access to destinations not served currently, not currently, sorry, access to destinations not currently reached by bus. And then tied for third was the guaranteed ride home, low cost for four riders, and knowledge slash competency. At the time, the group committee recommended more peak ride, more around commute times, and an on-demand ride option. More recently, in preparation to bring this topic before you, we conducted a survey of the Squawk, Talis, Old Town, and Issaquah Valley neighborhoods. We found that transit use in Issaquah has gone down 20% since 2020, which is in line with national trends. 65% of folks would use transit if it was available within a block of their residence. And the top issues we found were first-mile-last-mile issues still persist, lack of safety, familiarity, or comfort when riding, which is also in line with national trends, and difficulty understanding or planning around transit schedule. And these last two can be probably attributed to either an inability to get to transit or just lack of education around the transit system. At this point, I'm going to hand it over to Meredith.
Hi, everybody. I'm Meredith Sampson with King County Metro. I work on their service planning team with a focus down east King County, and I'm here to talk through some, an overview of Metro Flex and a potential partnership with the city of Issaquah. So for the last several years, Metro was operating on-demand services through a couple different vendors, and in March, we consolidated under one vendor called Via. So all of our on-demand services in all service areas are operated by Via at this point, and we call the service Metro Flex. The service is open to the general public, and the main premise is that people can use the service to travel from any point to any point within a service area. The main priorities of this service are to connect riders to the transit network, either through major stops, park-and-rides, transit centers, or to connect people to community assets such as grocery stores or hospitals locally. Riders can request a ride on-demand using either the Metro Flex app, our call center, or our website. Riders can designate a start destination and an end destination for their trip within the service area, and then are given an ETA. They are instructed to walk to a nearby pickup location, usually the nearest cross street, and the rider then gets in the Metro Flex vehicle, which may be a shared ride. The average wait time currently across all service areas is about 15 minutes. And when a rider books a ride, they can designate in their profile whether or not they need a wheelchair-accessible vehicle or not, and the profile will remember that for future trips, or if you call, the same thing, it'll remember for future trips. So that will always be available to riders. And if you do designate that you need a wheelchair-accessible vehicle, you will not be required to walk to the nearest cross street. It will pick you up at your door. Interpreter services are also available to request a ride. And one thing I want to emphasize about this service is that it is the same fare as a bus. You can use your Orca card, you can use a Transit Go ticket, or you can pay through the app for the credit. Here is a map of our current Metro Flex service areas. There are seven of them: Wanita, Samamish, Kent, Othello, Rainier Beach/Skyway, Renton Highlands, and Taquilla. King County is very large area-wise, with a huge mix of different densities and land uses, as you all know. And these services areas really vary from more urban land uses to lower-density suburban land uses. And putting areas or service areas in these different types of areas is helping Metro learn a lot about the service area design and where these services really do well across the county. So part of a learning opportunity for a service area in Issaquah would be monitoring how the service impacts the local fixed route network that exists after the East Link Network is implemented. This slide shows the existing Samamish service area and how it's performing as of the week of June 18th. We wanted to provide you with some data, because you may be wondering how this type of service performs and some of the metrics, and we chose to show Samamish because it's your neighbor. But we do realize that Samamish has different land use patterns and is different than Issaquah, so this is not exactly what we will see in Issaquah if this service is implemented. You can see that the service area in Samamish is averaging 2.3 rides per vehicle hour, an average wait time of 10, or 9.4 minutes, or an average travel time of 9.4 minutes, sorry, an average wait time of 10 minutes. And one thing I do want to mention is that we have seen consistent growth in ridership across the, in the Samamish service area over the past year, even through the transition to operating under a new, under Via now, like under a new operating model. So the ridership actually increased 193% between June 2022 and June 2023. So we're seeing a huge growth in demand in that area. And something that we are seeing across service areas as well is that the top destination that riders are using Metro Flex to travel to is a transit hub, whether that be to a park-and-ride, a transit center, or a bus stop, or whatnot. So this map is a heat map, and it shows where riders are mostly connecting to within the Samamish service area. The top three destinations or origins are the Issaquah Highlands Park-and-Ride, the QFC Grocery Store, or Beaver Lake Middle School. This is a tool that can and is being used to provide first- and last-mile connections, which were mentioned as a key need earlier, and are, as well, to connect folks to community assets that may not be accessible by transit. We expect with this zone expanded to include a larger portion of Issaquah, including the Squawk and Talis neighborhoods, to see riders connecting to the Issaquah Transit Center, to the Highlands Park-and-Ride, the hospital, and other community assets as well. So with that, I will hand it back over to John to talk about the Issaquah service.
Thank you, Meredith. Yeah, let's talk about the service area. So early in the planning process, we looked at having two distinct service areas between Samamish and Issaquah, but came to the conclusion that a combined service area would serve all demand in the area, assume growth, and create a much more equitable, efficient, and cost-efficient service. So we're looking at a service area that would connect Squawk and Talis neighborhoods and the former Route 200 service area, plus a lot more. It would serve central and common destinations. It connects to important transit centers, specifically R2, and connects to the Samamish service area. Service would provide accessibility to transit and local businesses, medical services, including Swedish Hospital, which, to note, we recently, they recently lost their bus stop, and natural areas like trails and parks. You'll remember that Trailhead Connect no longer serves Issaquah trailheads either. It would provide Samamish residents with access to Issaquah businesses. We also worked to include apartments in lower-income areas and access to Lake Samamish State Park. And I will note specifically that it fulfills the goals of the Mobility Master Plan. And then just really quickly, through my work at the city, I've come across a few examples of need for some sort of on-demand option that would connect. For example, we have an employee here at the city. They live at the Anthropology Apartments on the west side of town, off Newport Way. They have a partner that was using their one car to commute. Metro Flex would have provided a very short commute for them, but instead, they had to tell, I had to tell her to walk a mile to Transit Center to take a bus or buy a bike, and she did tell me that she was paying $25 to $30 a day to get to City Hall. Another example, a city staff member told me that he recently met a person at the Issaquah Transit Center who had taken the 554 to Issaquah, and then needed to get to a person's residence for their job doing in-home care. And then thirdly, during our transit study outreach at the senior center, the seniors there expressed a need for more transportation choices to get around for daily errands, like going to the store, medical appointments, and going to the nail salon. So shifting over to budget. Metro has a budget for this area of $907,000, which is a combination of Metro's 644,000 contribution and Issaquah's $263,000 contribution. This is based on Metro's demand estimates. This funding should be adequate to meet existing and expansion demand and address growth in demand over time as well. So we approached Metro on your recommendation and offered to pay for the service, because we know it's such a high priority for council to connect our neighborhoods, specifically Squawk and Talis. This would provide access to parts of Issaquah not ever served by transit. The funding agreement in the contract protects Issaquah from fluctuations in costs and is a commitment to Issaquah as a priority-needs area for this service. Also, Issaquah is first in line for this service expansion. There are other cities who want this, but we're number one in line. A huge reason for this is because, why Metro wants to partner with us is that we at the city, is that we at the city, based on past council decisions and directions, have expressed that we're willing to financially contribute, and we would not be considered for this program without that contribution, nor will any other community be moving forward. Looking at the proposed contract. So in summary, this contract was updated slightly this morning. I think you probably saw that email, just, I think, a sentence. But in summary, the service would begin in October of this year. Service will be provided a minimum of two years and expires on December 31st, 2025. Operation would be Monday 2020. Operation would be Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and Saturday, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The fares are a part of the Orca system, and that means it's also free to youth. The city will fund the service at a cost of $262,611 per year, and performance data will be provided quarterly. Mobility and Infrastructure asked for a couple of things. The first is, how are we going to fund this? The expenditure forecast assumptions prepared for tonight include, for demonstration purposes, the Metro Flex contract. The forecast shows that the contract can be paid by the general fund. The funding will be $65,653 for the project for this last quarter, October through December 2023, and then $262,611 for 2024, and then again for 2025. This will, of course, need a funding authorization request to amend the budget to include 2023 and 2024 costs. We were also asked to talk about a communications plan. I'm going to invite Meredith up again to talk about the metro side of the marketing plan.
Just give a high-level kind of update on what I've heard from our marketing folks and what the game plan is for this kind of expansion. But first, I would say that all of this would be coordinated with the city of Issaquah as a, like a coordinated effort. We wouldn't do anything else. So this is our first, this would be our first expansion after the launch of the Metro Flex consolidation. But to celebrate that milestone and new service, we would want to kind of do an outreach and planning campaign that included targeted mailers, outreach events, starting a couple weeks before the service launched through the winter. Our market research shows that rider stories and testimonials help to foster trust and interest in the service. So we look forward to showcasing the diversity and positive experiences of current riders through our marketing campaign. And we also look forward to partnering with the city of Issaquah to leverage your communication channels. For instance, we'd like to consider a series of ride-alongs with city of Issaquah staff and council members if they'd like to serve as kind of a media moment showcasing the convenience, reliability, and safety of Metro Flex.
On the city side, we've been able to talk to our communications team. We will, of course, leverage, you know, our city newsletter, the city website, lots of social media posts. We also have several city events coming up, including Salmon Days, which it would be in operation for. I think most importantly is, I think we're going to engage our stakeholders. Those are HOAs and neighborhood associations, our vision partners like Visit Issaquah, Youth Ride Free, so talk to our youth specifically through the school district, and talk to our senior centers, or the senior center and our retirement communities as well. Finally, we have a request for success criteria. So when talking to our data analysts here at the city, we came to the conclusion that we could look at success criteria in kind of two different buckets. The first comes from that performance data that they will give us quarterly, so we'll be able to see progress over time, very, kind of, every quarter. And then we also have long-term community outcomes that we can look at. So with the performance data, we will get ridership, average daily trips, preventable accidents, PMT/VMT, which is person miles traveled and vehicle miles traveled, percent of trips in equity priority areas, rides per vehicle hour, cost per ride, and percent of shared trips. Looking at our long-term, looking at our, at a long-term success criteria, we already have a lot of data that we're collecting already that we could leverage. So we can look at our resident perception of mobility modes within Issaquah through our city data, which comes from the National American Community Survey data. And then our bi-annual community survey, we ask the questions of how residents use transit, the ease of travel by public transit in Issaquah, and then satisfaction with mobility options. Talking to our data analysts, we also came to the conclusion that we should definitely track whatever engagement we do with the community, whether it's social media posts, whether we're at farmer's markets, whether we're at Salmon Days, whatever we're doing, we need to be able to basically track exactly what we're doing, see that progress over time, because marketing is very important. So coming to past council committee and advisory board direction. Back in June, we took this topic to the TAB, and it came out with a 3-2 split against. I want to note that three members were absent, and I, as the staff liaison, was not in the room because I had COVID. And it was also the same night as a council meeting, so the staff that were in the room were coming here. So it was, it was kind of a different situation. The three opposed had concerns about service success due to past outcomes, namely the Route 200 and it being taken away ultimately. They were also concerned about the cost per ride being higher than bus service. And then they also requested more data from King County Metro, which they have more than provided since then. The two members in favor were concerned that viable mobility opportunities were being missed out on over time. They saw, they see point-to-point service as very much needed in the community, and they think the cost to the city is minimal for what service is going to be provided. Last month, we brought this topic to MNI, and the committee recommended that the pilot agreement be approved. They requested that the administration bring more information to the council concerning proposed marketing and outreach for the service, which I provided before, how the pilot would be funded, which I also provided, and what success criteria the city will use to evaluate the pilot, which I provided. Looking at next steps, hopefully, we can finalize and approve the contract. We'll be looking at the two-year pilot estimated launch in October. We'll get quarterly reports on performance, and Metro will consider, or will continue to evaluate the service based on their service guidelines, equity, productivity, and efficiency. So, that being said, our recommendation is to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the agreement as revised on August 7th today with King County Metro to begin the Metro Flex pilot program, authorize $65,653 in funding for the project in 2023, and $262,611 in 2024 to be included in the 2023-2024 mid-bi-am budget adjustment. That, thank you. We can take any questions.
Okay. I will start to see if council has any questions that we'd start with. Councilmember Marks.
Can you give me a little bit more information on the cross, how it's going to work? If somebody's coming from Samamish into Issaquah, they're going across regions, how's that going to work financially?
It will be the same cost, basically. Do you want to add any other additional?
I was thinking more who pays for it.
So the, the way the funding would be set up is that Metro has the contribution that John mentioned earlier. Issaquah's funding the $262,000, but it would just, it's all under one bucket. So someone riding from Samamish to Squawk or Squawk to Samamish would come out of that one funding bucket.
So the, the funding that Issaquah provides would be basically a fixed fee for the service, and it wouldn't be variable if it turned out that twice as many people from Samamish wanted to come into Issaquah. It wouldn't change, at least, within that calendar year, it wouldn't change the cost process.
Correct. Correct. It's a set fee for, set cost for the city of Issaquah, and if demand exceeds that, then Metro.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yep. Deputy Councilperson Hall.
Could you go back to the slide on performance metrics, the different success criteria? I'm just wondering if we considered, so these are all great success criteria, and we talked about it a little bit at committee too, and we were kind of going back and forth as to whether or not to, like, assign particular goal values that we want to achieve by the end of the pilot program. Did, did we consider that from staff side, kind of setting kind of benchmarks that we want to meet for percent of shared trips, cost per ride, that kind of thing, or is that something we just want to analyze over time?
Yeah, great question. My thought was we were, we would start, we would get the first quarter data, and then we would basically see what would be a good feasible goal over time, and of course, work with Metro on those as well.
I'd like to make a motion. It went away, though. I moved authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the agreement with King County Metro, begin the Metro Flex pilot program, and authorize $65,653 in funding for the project in 2023, $262,611 in 2024 to be included in the 2023-2024 mid-bi-am budget adjustment.
Second.
And can I just clarify that that is the as revised August 7th? There was a small revision to the contract with some legal terms.
Right you are.
As revised, and second agrees. Okay. Fantastic.
It's working off the package.
Yep. Well, things change quickly around here.
It's a dynamic place.
Yes. So, looking through that, Committee Chair Wright, would you like to summarize the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee recommendation for this item?
Yes, I would love to. Thanks. On July 11th, Mobility and Infrastructure Committee met and received a presentation on Metro Flex, and were generally pretty impressed. We also realized that there were reasonable concerns that were raised by the Transportation Advisory Board, and we consider those, those concerns when making our recommendation to approve this agenda bill. The data presented by Metro clearly highlighted the value of Metro Flex. It's clear that we have a need for this kind of a program in the city, and it makes sense from a couple of perspectives I'd just like to talk about. One is, we've been talking about Squawk and Talis, integrating them in the transfer transit system for as long as I can recall. This program addresses that interconnectivity and provides a flexible tool that provides transit options across Issaquah, not just the two hills. The plan to expand its Samamish service area makes a lot of sense to me. It provides connectivity between the two cities that are really highly interconnected, and it provides Samamish residents an opportunity to access some really important destinations here in Issaquah, which I think is good for business here in town. We had talked about last mile and, you know, using Metro Flex as a way to be a transit center feeder, but it's more than that. It can be a way to feed the transit centers, but it also provides a more robust intra-city communications, which was something that came out during our community survey, was that intra-city transit was, was an important item. I was really happy to see the communications plan, the performance metrics updated. Thank you very much for that, the results of the feedback we provided. And there's much to be said in support of this agenda bill, but I know that my Mobility and Infrastructure, many colleagues are waiting to weigh in, so I'm going to stop there and let them elucidate.
Councilmember Deidre Michelle.
Well, Councilmember Wright did a good job of summarizing, but I'll just focus in on one of the issues that I wanted to address, and that is the cost of the, of the system, which was one of the main concerns of the Transportation Advisory Board. What we're doing with the $262,000 in funding is we are investing in a two-part strategy that will get Issaquah a significant return on investment over time. The first part of the strategy is to build a transit system in partnership with Metro and Sound Transit that meets the needs of our community. Metro Flex helps us to do that. But the second part of the strategy is to build a customer base, and building the customer base is as important as building the system. Without robust ridership, Issaquah will not be able to rationalize future transit investments, but more importantly, we will not meet our Issaquah Climate Action Plan goals of reducing carbon emissions by reducing the number of single occupancy vehicles on our roads. This investment in a Metro Flex van program will help us build a customer base of riders who will use transit for more than just commuting. We've, we've been a good commuting community, but we need to broaden the use of transit in our community. People who will weave transit use into their daily lives, and that is something that will pay handsome environmental and transportation dividends in the future, in my opinion. So I will, of course, strongly support this proposal. I am excited, and I'm going to raise my hand and volunteer to be one of those council members who's riding in the van when it's going around. I think this is a great proposal, and as John said, we've been waiting a long, long time, and really thrilled that Metro came forward with a really excellent proposal. Thank you.
Other comments? Okay. Councilmember Hunt?
I, I am also supportive. Since we do have a member, a representative of Metro, I wanted to also speak to the importance of bus service to Issaquah. We're taking action for the last mile problem that we have in Issaquah right now, but it is also very important that we have bus service into and back from Seattle, and that that is also efficient and convenient and all of the, all of the things that we're looking for this Metro Flex program. We want people to know that that bus service is reliable and safe and comfortable as well. So I stress that because this will help people get to our transit station, but if we are losing bus service, then that makes that less, less desirable, and so it's really important for people's livelihoods that we keep and hopefully continue to improve upon our connection to Seattle. And at least in Issaquah, light rail is a long ways out, so we really do rely on that TAB, the Transportation Advisory Board was correct, I think, to be concerned about the loss of bus service that we have experienced recently to Issaquah. There is a sort of, there can be a sort of downward spiral effect where if we have less service, it becomes less efficient, and we have less people using that service, and therefore there's less funding, and then you get less service. So I want to make sure that we are doing the opposite. We are having, we're allowing more people to access the service. It becomes something that people are more comfortable with, they rely on it more, and it becomes more a usual part of their day-to-day work experience, for example, and we increase ridership. That all said, I am very supportive of this. One, one additional concern I have is I want to look back on this and not wonder if people just didn't know about the service. So we definitely, I think, need to get the word out. When we look back, I want it, I want it to either have succeeded, or, you know, if we see that it didn't, this is a pilot program, so I want to be able to look at that data, but one thing I don't want to wonder is if it, if we just didn't get the word out. So in addition to the proposed marketing that you, the marketing strategies that you mentioned, I wondered about something with paper because a lot of those were online, and there are, there are folks that don't go to the website, and we have these word-on-the-street things that we put out for construction projects, and I've oftentimes seen those where they don't have the flyers anymore because people have taken the, taken the flyers. So I wonder about something with paper, something to reach those people that aren't using the online system. I think it's really important that we reach people that aren't hearing all the time about our programs, that might want to use this service, and so I just really encourage us to be creative and very expansive in the ways we try to get the word out about this So, and this is a new thing for Issaquah, and, and that's exciting, but it also means that people don't currently use this program, so we need to quickly get over that learning curve and have people understand the program and that it's there and start using the program. The last thing I wanted to mention is we have heard from a lot of different perspectives on why they're supporting Metro Flex. We've heard from Visit Issaquah, which is representing the tourism benefits of this, Hope Link, Issaquah People for Climate Action, for the emissions reduction benefits, also for salmon conservation, reducing runoff. emissions reduction benefits, also for salmon conservation, reducing runoff, and then for seniors, as was mentioned. So I think this also has potential to reduce congestion a little bit if people are reducing their single-family vehicle trips. So there's just a lot of benefits here. And I agree with the opinion that did come out of the tab that this expense will be really worth it to see if this helps us address what has been a longstanding issue for our community with this last mile connection. So I look forward to seeing the results. I look forward to using the service as well. I would be happy to do a ride along as well. And thank you for all the work that was done on this.
Okay, Councilmember Marks?
Thank you. I'm going to be supporting this this evening. I supported it the last couple of times we talked about it. I've been on council now for 14 years. I've voted for this three or four times. I can't remember. It's at least three, might be four. We need this in our community. This is a community that believes in mass transit, and I want to echo some of the comments Councilmember Hunt made about the importance of bus service. This is a community that supported ST3 despite the fact that it's quite a ways away and perhaps taking even longer than we thought. And, you know, we see transit developments where, you know, 214 goes away, 554 will eventually get routed through Bellevue and won't take us directly into Seattle. And so this is a community that really needs to see some positive movement on mass transit to provide for the folks that we have in this community. So I'm going to support this. I want to see it thrive, but I also want to see both Metro and Sound Transit, you know, commit to East King County and, you know, and, you know, what's the word I'm looking for, you know, basically support the commitment we've made to transit, you know, we want to see that out of Metro and Sound Transit. So I'm going to support this, and I hope that this is the beginning of a real continued strengthening of mass transit into East King County. Thank you.
Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. I'm very supportive of this program. I'd like to talk a little bit about the danger that the city is facing a little bit in terms of becoming an area that has some grocery store deserts, if you will. When the Front Street Market moved away, the people in Hutchinson House and some of the other senior living areas couldn't go down the grocery store five or six blocks away, but have to go all the way to Safeway, which is three quarters to almost a mile away. So I think this program is so important to make sure that those senior citizens have an opportunity to make those trips. I see them walking in all sorts of weather and in 90-degree temperatures, and, you know, it's important that we support their ability to continue to live independently in this community as much as possible. So that being said, I would hope that we'd also look to opportunities to bring another grocery store back to the downtown area, but that's another discussion for another day. Also, I really think that this is an important program for us in the sense that it's going to allow our youth to get, our youth, our young people, to get out in the community a little bit more. My son likes to go fishing, and he can only go to places that he can walk to, but if this comes into play, he could go to the state park and go without me having to drive him there and stay on the beach for hours and hours with no cell phone service. So I would really appreciate if that would happen as well. That being said, I do want to echo some of the comments about Issaquah as a commuter community. When I first moved here for many years, I took the 214 into town, and if I missed the 214, I had to take the 210 at 8 o'clock at night and get home at 10 o'clock at night. Service wasn't that great back then. It has stabilized somewhat recently, but it still is something that I think we're going to need to look at as we pull out of this COVID situation and get more people going into town. And I'd urge all my fellow council members to find creative ways to encourage Metro to come back out here and provide additional services, or the city to step up and provide those services, as we want Issaquah to be a vibrant community that has people that go all the way into Seattle, people that live in community, in the community here and still working here as well along the way. So I'm very supportive of this program. I look forward to its success, and I would be happy to be a carpool dummy or a carpool tester as we take my son out to Lake Smamish. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to take a moment to just speak on this. As the sole resident of the Highlands on the council, I'm kind of frustrated at this point, honestly, because if I'm looking at this, our city has three hillside neighborhoods, and I mapped this out. I took the farthest point on Squawk Mountain, on Talis, and in the Highlands, and they're all 1.9 miles away from the transit centers for each of them. And so I'm sitting here and going, hmm, this is a little bit confusing, because we've got the Highlands, which is one of our densest neighborhoods, that has quite a bit more low-income housing than those other two neighborhoods that don't have access to transit. In all three of those neighborhoods, it's a 35-minute walk to the transit center. And I understand when the initial conversation for this happened in 2019 and before, the Highlands actually had an on-demand shuttle. We had Route 628, which ran from 2015 to 2020, before it was canceled, and now we don't. And so I'm kind of looking at this and going, are we shooting ourselves in the foot by not including one of the densest neighborhoods that could see a lot of access to transit to, again, further emphasize and be able to utilize the full system, but also be able to get into town? So I would just ask my council members to think about this. I love this concept of being able to provide last-mile transit. I think the benefits for youth and seniors, people with mobility issues, low-income folks, really, really important. I just think we have an opportunity to think about how that should be utilized in a way that best serves all of the residents of Issaquah. And so I have a few other comments, but I see also Councilmember Ray has his mic up, so I will let you see if you have a comment. Thank you.
Thanks for letting me kind of jump in the middle of your comments, but my understanding, and I make sure I'm not missing this, because one of the things I thought was a neat feature was it wasn't just, you know, from Talis to the transit center, from the Squawk to Talis, it was anywhere to anywhere. So it does include everybody everywhere in the city and Smamish, too. So I just want to ensure that's correct.
My understanding is the Highlands and the South Lake Smamish are not included in the service area. Is that correct?
That is correct. Although, just to be clear, the Lower Highlands is. There's a chunk of the Highlands. Yeah, Lower Highlands is currently served right now, actually, by Metroflex.
So I think this is, that's my frustration with this as a concept, is when you look at it and you look at the map and you're like, oh, it serves Issaquah. And then you're like, wait, there's a whole other part of Issaquah that is one-third of our population or more, if we're also including the South Lake Smamish area? And I can understand the South Lake Smamish area because it's in some ways closer to Bellevue, so you could look at some of that connectivity. It's also lower density. But the Highlands has, and I will tell you, I've been door knocking recently, and there is a large area of low-income housing up in the Highlands that is super frustrated that they don't have access to get into all of the things that they need, including down to transit. From my house, it's 1.8 miles down to the transit area. So I guess I will just say that I think for a citywide cost, we should consider how this might best serve the city and all of its neighborhoods. Other comments on this? I will ultimately support it, but I would like to look at a way that we could include the Highlands in that and see what any adjustment to cost would be. I think without that, we're looking at potentially not being able to really very well evaluate how our community as a whole responds to on-demand. But I will say, for public outreach, I think this could be huge for high school students. I'd really like to get connected to the high schools. I think you could absolutely utilize Gibson Act as a way to talk about how to get everyone involved as a way there. I'd like to make sure we involve the Chamber and other areas. I'd like to make sure we involve the YWCA and any of the low-income groups. Speaking to some of the other things that I've heard here, I really appreciate the success criteria focusing on both the performance data and the community outcomes. But I do strongly believe that we should set goal targets that would help us evaluate whether or not this is a good expense for us to renew when the time comes. And I think we should do it before we get the initial data, because I don't want to set our sights low. If our initial data says there's only 100 people riding on it, I don't want us to go, well, we should be satisfied with 150 or 200. I really want us to look at what the population that this would serve would be and use some of the data out there, but really stress, we want this type of ridership in order to know that this is useful for us. So that's what I would say. Any other comment? Oh, City Administrator.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Maybe John could talk a little bit more about the situation in the Highlands and the path that brought us here.
Yeah, the current service area that we're proposing came from analysis that Metro conducted into what kind of service area would be the most efficient, what kind of density. So for example, South Lake Smamish, not very dense, therefore it was left out at this time. But I'd love to invite Metro to speak a little bit more in detail about the proposed service area.
Hi. So when we're looking at service area design, there's really a sweet spot for size that makes a service area efficient and reliable for riders. And the service area proposed is currently 13 square miles, which is at the larger end of our service area size spectrum across the different Metroflex areas. And kind of when the city approached us about this, we were really looking at the mobility solutions for Squawk and Talis based on that outreach from 2019 that was mentioned. So that was the focus of kind of creating a service area that worked for those different neighborhoods. And then when we were exploring that, it came to the, well, we can really use resources efficiently and money efficiently all the way around if we combine and do an expansion of the Smamish service area. And that's kind of how we came to this service area design right now. But I definitely hear you with the need in the Highlands, but that's kind of just a little backdrop into how we came to this service area. We want to make sure it's the size that is able to be, the need is able to be met by Metroflex, and increasing the demand over a certain point kind of just makes the service less efficient and will increase wait times. And so, Brian, do you have anything you want to add?
I would just add that we're continuing to learn. So as we, you know, if we move forward with this pilot, we need to learn, experiment. And I mean, resource is like part of the equation here about what's available in terms of funding, but if that changes in the future, we could also look at, like, experiment. So I think it's a starting point, like Meredith said, with trade-offs, but we want to keep learning, see how we can evolve over time.
Let me ask two questions based on that, and I appreciate the information. Do you know the size of the Smamish service area? Or can you?
I can look that up.
Okay, great. I'll ask my second question while you're going through that. If in the middle of this contract, we find that there isn't a lot of user or ridership in a certain area, and we wanted to potentially drop that and add the Highlands, would that be something that we could discuss and figure out? Or is that something that would have to wait until the end of a contract?
I think we'd be open to having discussions with city staff and kind of looking at the metrics that we have and the ridership patterns.
Yeah, because I imagine you want to maximize ridership as well and all of that.
Yeah, we definitely want the service to be as successful as possible. And the Smamish service area as it is currently is seven square miles.
So if what I'm hearing is we're basically combining the ridership area between Smamish and Issaquah, and ours is at the max, but theirs is not.
I will caveat that and say, existing Smamish does serve a portion of Issaquah right now. I don't know, based on the city boundaries and the service areas.
Yeah, it serves a portion of Issaquah because it takes the Smamish residents to the Highlands Park and Ride. Anyway, I wish this had been brought up in either TAB or the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee to recognize that there was a large portion of our community that is not being served by this. I hope that this is something that we can look at, because I think it potentially puts a thorn in trying to advertise to, say, all of the kids at Issaquah High School and say, you can use this service, and then they go, but I can't get my house to it, or I can't get to Central Park where I want to go play soccer, or something else like that. I just think it's short-sighted to not include that area. But I will move on on that. If there are no other discussion, the motion before council is to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the agreement as revised August 7 with King County Metro to begin the Metroflex pilot program and authorize $65,653 in funding for this project in 2023 and $262,611 in 2024 to be included in the 2023-2024 mid-biennial budget adjustment. All those in favor signify by, oh, okay, a comment from Councilmember Hunt.
Just before we, I'll be brief, but it seems like you've raised a good point. There is opportunity for more discussion on this. As far as the service area, we're doing a pilot. We're going to learn a lot, hopefully quickly. I'm wondering if it would be helpful or something that we could have a checkpoint and agree that after a year or after maybe two quarters, we would look at the numbers and look at whether there's the possibility of evaluating what part of the Highlands could be.
City Administrator?
Thank you, Council President and Councilmember Hunt. I think practically, we're going to have to anyway, because we'll be going through a biennial budget process a year from now. And so if the council's interested in continuing this beyond the pilot, we'll need to do some budgeting for that. But I think that we could, we could come back in a year, so that would be too late for the budget process. But we could come back probably springtime of '24 with a touch point, so that'd be roughly six months, because if this is something that the council wishes to expand, I think we'll have to come up with dollars. We'll need to talk with the transit agency to see what they are prepared to additionally add to this. I think that's a key component, and our colleagues from King County Metro alluded to it, but I'll put a sharper point on it, that there's only so much money that they have available. So if we're looking to expand that, that means our proportion of this will likely increase, and that will be something that the council will have to consider. This is a general fund cost. We could use this for roads, police officers, parks, and we are using it for the shuttle service. So if we're looking to expand it, it will also be a general fund cost, and we'll compete with other priorities in the city. But we can commit to come back to transportation and mobility next spring as we're gearing up the budget process for '25, '26 and report out usage and all of the things we've talked about this year.
And I will say, I recognize that our staff is always good at doing that type of check-in, and definitely when it comes to the budget period, do you feel like there is a need for an amendment? do you feel like there is a need for an amendment or just recognizing?
I am satisfied with that timeline. I thought it would be good to put a finer, more detail on that timeline before we vote. But I am satisfied with that.
Okay. Given that I just read the motion, I am just going to continue and say, all those that in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes unanimously.
And Mayor Per Tim, if I can just say one more word. Thanks to John Larson-Friend. The city council 18 months ago said, we're tired of this not getting done. We don't care if there's no money. We don't care if the metro's not doing this. We want it done. And Mayor Pauli heard you loud and clear. Mayor Pauli included in her budget this position, and John has tirelessly worked to make this happen. And so we're very proud of John's work. Mayor Pauli, I think, is proud that she was able to hear the council's frustration and propose in the budget this position, because what it really took was a dedicated staff person to doggedly go after our dear friends and colleagues at King County Metro, who are worrying about a big county coming off of a pandemic, lots of other service issues. Yet the city of Isiquah was on their doorstep over and over and over again saying this is important for our community. So I want to thank Mayor Pauli for her leadership. I want to thank the council for funding the position. And most importantly, I want to thank John, coming on as a new staff member. This was on the top of his to-do list. And while he can't quite check it off, you could at least highlight it at this point, that a great and job well done. So, very much, John.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. The next item on our agenda is ID 1486, the WashDOT Fish Passage Project City Property Impacts. And for this, okay. Director Moon, you're starting us out. Okay. By the way, I used your address as a mapping down to the transit center. So you're one of the edges.
Hi. Good evening. Emily Moon, Public Works Director. I'm here with Jeff Watling, your Parks and Community Services Director. We're here to talk about the Fish Passage Project. We were here in February last time to give you an overview of the project. And we did that in concert with WashDOT staff being here as well. So tonight, though, we are having a more focused presentation talking about some real property impacts, city of Isiquah property impacts. And our hope is to get some feedback from you so that we can take that feedback to WashDOT, help inform their RFP process, which should be launching in October, and also provide some direction for future agreements that we anticipate may need to come before you. There are three locations that we will talk about tonight. Lewis Creek at Southeast Newport Way, West Village Park in Schneider Creek within Sammamish Cove Park, and Tibbetts Creek, crossing of SR 900 at the southern part of the city. We'll also review very quickly a project timeline. We have shared that in the past with you. We're going to then go into depth on each of these locations and at the end, hopefully, get that feedback from you. So the project is very complex, as we have said before. We're anticipating right now that WashDOT will issue a request for proposals in October. This date has just recently changed. They haven't announced a particular date. We think it's about two weeks later in October. But their plan is then to receive those responses. They have already run a request for qualifications, so they've narrowed the field already. They'll get those RFP responses back in January. And then by about March, we'll have an indication of who the design builder will be. As we said in February, this is a very long project. They must complete the project by 2030, per the federal injunction. And so, city of Isiquah will be living with this project for many years. First location is Lewis Creek, and this is at the far west boundary of Isiquah. The creek currently passes from the Lakemont side of the city, Bellevue side of the city, and goes under I-90. That isn't changing, except that the creek's alignment will be slightly to the east of where it is currently located today. And they will attempt to daylight portions of the creek. In order to do that, they are proposing to change where the on-ramp is for I-90, moving it to the east, and create a roundabout to help with traffic control as you are passing east-west on Newport and out of Lakemont Orchard's driveway, and again, on the on-ramp. So some of the property impacts that we wanted to talk to you involve how ownership or maintenance responsibilities may change on these parcels. So this is the current condition. WashDOT has existing right-of-way, shown in red here, and then the city of Isiquah. And I'm going to show you what they have proposed, but I wanted you to get a quick look at this. You'll see that red extends just up to the roundabout, but not through. This is what WashDOT has proposed. As you can see, the city of Isiquah's ownership would be discontinuous. The city's portion would be sandwiched in between city of Bellevue and WashDOT's. There's that yellow segment after the red segment to the east, but that is where we would pick up the last little bit on your screen there, the bottom right-hand corner. The bridge span that is in that yellow section would be approximately 160 feet. City of Bellevue does own, operate, control some of the intersection that you see there on the far west end. I'm going to come back to why this is not our recommendation, but I wanted you to have a clear look of what they are proposing. City administration's recommendation is that we do indeed ensure that city of Bellevue has right-of-way abilities, can control legs of the intersection in order to make sure the whole intersection performs the way that it needs to. We have good collaboration with them. We'll be able to share data, technology, all of that. But it makes sense to us that they would take this portion of the right-of-way. This is actually outside of city limits as well. So for that reason, we are supporting WashDOT's recommendation to change the right-of-way ownership to the city of Bellevue on the far west end. However, we would recommend that WashDOT takes maintenance responsibilities, ownership responsibilities, right-of-way responsibilities, all the way from that point where Bellevue ceases up until we get past the roundabout and the on-ramp, and then the city's right-of-way ownership and maintenance responsibilities would begin. And again, I'll come back to that and kind of talk about why that is our recommendation. In addition, before we move off of this slide, the city would also work through some maintenance agreements with WashDOT. We would have an interest in doing that, because this is the gateway, one of the gateways to our city. We want to make sure that it meets our standards. We also have an interest in making sure that this initial entrance into the Newport corridor fits our Newport corridor design that city council blessed some time ago. And we would want to make sure that snow removal and those types of activities are again up to our standard here. So it's not uncommon for the city to have some agreements with WashDOT or the county to caretake in order to make sure that it meets our standards. So our recommendation is that the right-of-way is converted in that middle sandwich section that WashDOT had proposed for the city to WashDOT Limited Access, and then it include the roundabout through Lakemont Orchard's driveway. You'll see here, I didn't mention earlier, but there is a multi-use trail proposed, the Mountains to Sound Greenway Trail proposed on Newport. And we would want to make sure that WashDOT is planning for that trail's construction, its existence in this portion of the project. We also would ensure that the city's utilities that would likely be located in that vicinity or hung under the bridge would be maintained through a city easement. We think WashDOT should own the bridge. That's a huge future financial obligation that the city would take on if it was in our ownership. We also believe that there are some ways to share those maintenance responsibilities with the city, taking some of, perhaps, some day-to-day maintenance obligations, but WashDOT having those longer-term, bigger capital replacement costs. And then, as I said, the city administration supports Bellevue converting the ownership on that west end to Bellevue so that they would also be able to control the Lakemont traffic signal. That's Lewis Creek. Next, I am going to move to the east and talk about Village Park, West Village Park Creek and Schneider Creek. And in a moment, I'm going to turn it over to Director Watling so that he can talk about the property impacts at this location. But I'm going to set it up by helping you understand this engineered map here. What you see in yellow are city roads. Newport Way on the bottom of the slide, Northwest Sammamish Road on the top, I-90 in between. What you see in blue is proposed West Village Park Creek alignment, new, joining up with Schneider Creek, which is coming in from the far right of the screen, crossing I-90, roughly where Schneider Creek crosses today, but new crossing for West Village Park, and continuing on to Sammamish Cove. Currently, the West Village Park Creek crosses I-90 to the west of here, at approximately just east of Southeast 51st Street. So just slightly to the west of the proposed crossing in this slide. Also, it's important to note that West Village Park, therefore, would run parallel to I-90 for a longer run than it currently does today. And it would combine with Schneider just northwest of the Revel Senior Apartments that are on Newport. Hopefully, that helps to orient you with that. Jeff?
Thank you, Director Moon, for that overview. So now, continuing on to the park. So as these two creeks are proposed to merge, they then would go underneath I-90. And this newly-aligned Schneider Creek would go through Sammamish Cove Park in a new alignment. A little bit of background on Sammamish Cove Park, just for context. This park was purchased by King County in the 90s. It was transferred to the city in 2007 as part of the South Lake Sammamish annexation. The city now, through that annexation, we're now the owner and the steward of this. King County utilized multiple grant sources when they purchased the park. So those deeds, those covenants are now our responsibility. As the map shows, this relocation does represent a pretty significant change to the property. It brings now a creek and its buffer into the property. You'll notice on the map that there's an existing trail. That existing trail would now be in the creek buffer, certainly something that we've noted to WashDOT. Something important to note, too, is we've been talking with WashDOT about this proposed impact and their interest in using the park. This property has some real key opportunities for trail connection. This property joins Lake Sammamish State Park. And so as we begin thinking into the future, opportunities for trails, opportunities for education on the site are something of importance and something that was sort of identified even with the original acquisition of this property. Go to the next slide.
Director Watling, we have a question. Deputy Council President Hall?
Just trying to decide if I should wait till the next slide or not, but I might as well just ask. Two quick questions on this. So when you say significant, will it be noticeable? So like, you drive along Northwest Sammamish Road right now, and you look out, and it's just a sea of pretty tall grass. You can't see anything. But, you know, envisioning this happening, would there be a noticeable creek going through the property?
Yeah, I think that design is still to be had. But yes, this would be an exposed creek. Environmentally, it brings some real benefits.
I'm sure.
But again, that is a new creek and a new buffer, a new critical area that would need to be managed as part of the park and managed with any current and future recreational use.
And I know there is a, I won't use the word "trail", but "trail" in quotes, from kind of the residential area through that park into, that's kind of heavily used by that community. I imagine that would then be impacted, something like this, right?
It would be. That is not a sanctioned trail.
Right, no, it's not.
But something, as we've partnered with Public Works and as we look at road improvements on that road, we do think a sanctioned trail connection through Sammamish Cove Park into Lake Sammamish State Park is a really important priority and something that, with this proposed new use, we would want to be very aware of and cognizant of.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep, you bet. Great questions. So where we're at, you know, WashDOT is seeking to utilize the park. We do not have an agreement in place yet between WashDOT and the city for the use of the city's real property. And that is something that we want to sort of talk through administration's recommendations for how we approach those negotiations and get your feedback on. The city does support the use of Sammamish Cove Park for this purpose. We do feel like there are some environmental benefits to this happening, to these creeks joining. However, we feel like there are some really important conditions and considerations that we should approach for allowing another public agency to use the park property. And those items really fall, our approach would fall into three categories or three areas of interest that we would want to begin with. And I'll go through those real quickly. The first is habitat restoration. As you mentioned, Deputy Council President Hall, that tall grass that you see throughout the property, that's reed canary grass. That's invasive. We know that that is something we want to mitigate and have wanted to mitigate. So what, that is going to be our first approach, is to have expanded habitat restoration on the property and not just habitat restoration of the impacted area. We think that is a public benefit that would both benefit the project as well as that property near term and long term. Without, quite frankly, expanded habitat restoration, that reed canary grass is only going to threaten any more small mitigation that they want to do on the creek and the buffer. So habitat restoration is our first approach for expansion of that work. And then the other area of interest I mentioned earlier is trails. So any mitigation or restoration of the current trails, we would ask WashDOT to do, as well as some degree of contribution for, in consideration for future trails within that newly-created creek. that newly-created creek and its buffer. We don't feel like, assuming this new use is necessarily a financial burden that we, the city, should take on when it comes to future recreational trails of this existing property. And the third area of interest would be those grant deeds and the deed restrictions, and recognizing that the two grants that were utilized to purchase the property, we don't anticipate, but should a conversion be needed because of WashDOT's proposed new use, we would ask that WashDOT be financially responsible for any conversion requirements that might come from those two grant agencies. I would point out that as we enter into these conversations with WashDOT, and again, invite your feedback on these negotiations, like any real property, any final terms, any transaction, any agreement on this real property will come back to you as city council for your approval. So really, what we're seeking tonight with this approach for WashDOT's interest in the park property is just your feedback on how we enter into these conversations with WashDOT.
Okay, Director Watling, before we move on to the next one, we've got Council Member Marts and Deputy Council President Hall.
Well, very rare for me. I'm completely confused by your map. And where is Schneider Creek?
In this map that you're showing right now?
In the city.
The proposed creek is the blue line.
Where is it? I see Tibbetts Creek, I see Lewis Creek to the west. Where is Schneider Creek with respect to Tibbetts and Lewis Creeks?
So on this-
This map doesn't, this map is very confusing. This isn't a creek that I know.
So it is not an existing creek? So this is the proposed alignment of Schneider Creek on Samamish Cove Park?
But I don't know what Schneider Creek is. I know Lewis Creek, and I know Tibbetts.
It is an existing creek. It's very small.
Okay.
And somewhat seasonal. So it does not show up, if you look on a Google map, for example. It's not a named creek typically at the level of detail that you'd see on Google Maps. If you were to go on the city's GIS, you could find it.
Okay.
And so to answer your question, Schneider Creek is to the west of Tibbetts. It is, of course, to the east of Lewis. Yes? Right, right.
Ah.
So it exists today. It runs right on the property line between Samamish Cove Park and a private abutter.
Which was going to be the second half of my question, because Samamish Cove Park is also not in two lines. Okay, now I know where we're talking about. Thank you so much.
Okay, Deputy Council President Hall?
Props to whoever pulled that map up very quickly. Thank you. Oh dear, I've forgotten. Oh, no. These terms that we want to talk about with WashDOT, do we think they would be receptive to things like this, or would they consider this outside the scope? What are we thinking?
Again, they're requesting use of our public property.
Right.
So typically, there is compensation from one public agency to another. So we have not begun those negotiations. We think this is an extremely reasonable approach that, again, sort of meets the nexus of their project and also meets the original intent of the purchase of the property.
Just quickly, Wayne and Rachel Turpin, City Attorney. They're also legally required to do mitigation to minimize the impacts of their work. So to the extent that they will be interfering with the critical areas and whatnot, they legally have to do it on that basis as well.
Everywhere, all over the state. Wow, don't envy them. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, the last location is at the southern boundary of the city on SR 900, and there's limited impact to city property. Our right-of-way and the city boundary line does some jigging and jogging in this area, but we do have a parcel that is designated as native growth protection easement area. And the restoration work that WashDOT would need to do in order to build this culvert is in part on that easement area. We think that the work that they're going to do in habitat restoration and enhancement is consistent with the native growth protection easement area, and as you heard, they would need to do some mitigation and restoration as well. So this is a location where we are supportive of their proposed property impacts, but we wanted to highlight it for you. It is a place where city property will be affected. Next steps, I just want to reiterate what Director Watling said. The city administration is supportive of this project. We are supportive of the project as a way to remove fish barriers and to enhance habitat. There are, though, some significant impacts of this project. Some of them we talked about tonight as real property impacts, others we talked about in February and will continue talking about as the project is designed and as we have a better understanding of those impacts, such as traffic impacts. But tonight, we are hoping to get your feedback on these real property impacts as we know them to be today, so that we can provide that feedback, your questions, your concerns, to WashDOT, so that they can refine their RFP, so that they can instruct the design builder appropriately, and so that we can enter into negotiations knowing your viewpoints and advocate for the city's position effectively. There's a lot of work that still has to be done as they build their RFP, as they collaborate with the design builder on the design builder's intended pursuit of the project. There's some flexibility there, so we will continue to learn as we go, and we will keep you apprised. After we have this impact response from you, we will begin those negotiations, and we anticipate we will have some formal agreements that will need to be executed by the city council. So we will bring those back to you. I don't have a timeline of this evening for when that will occur, but I anticipate that most of them will follow after the RFP has been kicked off by WashDOT. With that, be happy to answer any questions that you have and to hear any of your thoughts about these property impacts and the city's, city administration's recommendations on how we would like to respond to WashDOT.
Okay, and we've had a few questions so far. I'm just going to ask if there are any questions first. Okay, so we've got three questions, starting with Council Member Hunt, then Marts, then De Michelle.
On the Samamish Cove Park stream realignment, for the trails piece of this, when it says restore and mitigate for current trails, would they, in the scenario, would they hand the trail, they would build trails and hand them back to the city for maintenance after they finish them, or would they be responsible for maintaining those trails for any period of time?
For current trails, they would need to mitigate either the trail improvement itself or if the trail is now in a newly-formed buffer, they would need to provide that or perform the mitigation for keeping that trail in the buffer. But eventual, you know, trail maintenance would then be handed over to the city as it's part of a, within a city park.
Okay, so they would have to follow current code as far as what that mitigation would be, depending on how much-
Correct, with current trails, yep.
-was in the buffer. Okay.
Are any of these creeks salmonic, and if so, do they have regulatory or treaty implications?
Yes, is the answer to that question, and WashDOT has a whole set of additional rules, including NEPA, hydrological studies that they need to perform, and so they are abiding by all those requirements.
Thank you.
Let's remember, De Michelle?
So going back to the bridge over Lewis Creek, and I'm having difficulty actually looking at that map as well, is that bridge going to then extend over Newport Way, or is it too early in the design process to answer that question? But it looks like it goes across Lewis Creek and then across Newport Way. Is that correct?
It will become, in essence, Newport Way. It is going to be part of the roadway structure. We just call that portion a bridge, even though it will largely be flush with the existing elevation of Newport Way, just slightly raised to enable the culvert crossing underneath.
So, and is that the reason you're recommending that that also be owned by WashDOT then? So it would be, so basically, it would all be red in there, and it would all be managed by WashDOT when it's, when the whole project is done?
Correct. As they need to construct it for this project in order to build a bridge structure that is part of the culvert structure, that they then would be responsible for its large-scale maintenance and replacement in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Council President Hall?
Forgive me, did we already say that for that particular segment of road for Lewis Creek, that we would want it to conform to our adopted Newport Way corridor design standard? So it would meet whatever potential improvements we would do down the road would sync nicely with?
Yes, so I'm going to answer that in two different ways. I'm going to relay that we have provided them with the corridor plan, and we have asked them to instruct the design builder to make it consistent with that plan. They must also adhere to federal standards and state standards for this type of roadway. So the art will be in marrying up those two things and making sure that it functions in a safe and consistent with both of those regulations.
Can you just ask a follow-up question? It might be a dumb question on my part. That's not to say that our corridor design doesn't meet specific state or federal standards, right? Can you just clarify that?
No, but our corridor standard also doesn't speak to on-ramps and other facilities like that.
Oh, fair, thank you. Got it.
Okay, so I'm not seeing any other questions. So at this point, we need to provide comments back to the administration on any or all of these three. So who would like to start with comments on the administration's proposal? Okay, I'll start. Okay, I've got my comments already down on here. First of all, I absolutely concur that WashDOT should own the bridge for Lewis Creek. I remember times when other jurisdictions have built things like, say, the wall behind Fred Meyer, and then gifted it to us, and it has not come across very well. So I very much think that they should own that. I am also concerned about having an orphan road to maintain between roadways owned by other jurisdictions, so I think that's absolutely sound. On the Samamish Cove Park area, I think that becomes a little bit of a conflict for me because we're also having them construct something for Northwest Mammoth Road, but I don't think there's any proposed right-of-way or ownership changes there, and I don't think there should be. But I do wonder what the cost and responsibility it would be to maintain that culvert and the roadway bridge going over it. Also, I think, given that this is now then two creeks coming into one in an area that is fairly flat and fairly well-visited by beavers, I would just wonder what the possibilities are for flooding, both for properties nearby and for the trail. And if there is flooding, who would be responsible for that or responsible for removing or taking care of any beaver dams? So that would be a question I would want to come up and be resolved as we're coming through this process. Council Member Hunt?
Well, I agree on the Lewis Creek Bridge one with Council President Walsh. On the second, the second recommendation, which is the one with Schneider Creek and the new stream alignment, that, it seems like a lot of the things we're asking for in exchange for the use of this are things that are currently in the code that are required anyway, as was also pointed out by our city attorney. So I wonder, also because it is a site that has a lot of invasives, it's very, very much reed canary grass currently. I know there's been a lot of work elsewhere in Lake Samamish State Park, for example, to remove invasives. It's an ongoing, very labor-intensive process, takes a lot of work over a long period of time, and can very quickly revert back to that state. So I do think since, it seems to me like what we're mostly asking for is both very reasonable, but also mostly what our code already requires, if there is room to extend that time when they need to maintain that property and maintain it in the restored state and continue monitoring so it doesn't revert back to all reed canary grass and undo that work, again, also, it is an important stream for fish, and, you know, I think that habitat for fish, so maintaining that habitat would be important, and if we have room to ask for more in exchange, I would ask for more years of monitoring and maintenance and make sure we keep it in that positive state. And then similarly, we didn't, there wasn't as much information provided about the Tibbetts Creek area where they're doing restoration of that native protection growth area, but I would say similarly, just make sure that, if we have room, to make sure that they're monitoring and maintaining that restoration for as long as possible, that would be my ask.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Hall?
I just have another question based on your comments. So the creek going under I-90, does the work to Samamish Cove Park, would that have any impact to our ability to expand into the right-of-way for our remodel of Northwest Mammoth Road? Would there be any impact there?
We have been collaborating with them since, I can't even tell you, a long time, and they are aware of our preferred alternative design for Northwest Mammoth Road. They are instructing the design builder to build to that design, and it is city's road. It is not within WashDOT right-of-way right now, which is the difference with the location at the far west end with Lewis Creek. So the city will own and maintain that stretch, including the culvert, moving forward.
All right, thank you. And all I have to say then, it seems like staff are really on top of it, and the administration's recommendation seems very straightforward and common sense. Yeah, I think you've found a good path forward and keep up the good work with WashDOT.
Anyone want to just thumbs up what, yeah, okay?
Very good.
That satisfies our needs. Do you guys have anything else you need from us?
We do not. Thank you for the input. We'll relay that to WashDOT.
Excellent, as always. Okay, we've got one more regular item of business, which is ID 1470, the 2022 year-end overview and 2023-2024 revenue forecast. This is an informational item, so no action is requested, and I would like to bring up Chief Financial Officer Robert Hamud to present this item.
And Madam Mayor, pertained members of the councils, Robert settles in. There's a lot of information that we have for you this evening. I'm going to ask Robert to walk over the larger economic issues facing the region. I think you're very familiar with it. It's well documented in the staff report. It's in the presentation. If you have any questions at the conclusion, we'll be happy to talk to that. But I think in the interest of time, we'll, when we get to those points in the presentation, just kind of skip over them and head right on to the impacts directly this way. So with that, Robert, good evening.
And I will add on to that, we read them, so we're getting the information. Don't feel like it was wasted to give it to us, so thank you.
Thank you, Council President Walsh. That's always flattering to us budget geeks to hear that, of course. So I will summarize, there's two parts to this presentation. The- So I will summarize, there's two parts to this presentation, the 2022 year-end summary and the 2023 forecast.
And Robert, we're not seeing anything shared.
And so I'll go through the tables on '22 and then just ask your patients for questions at the end of that, and then we'll talk about '23 afterward. And so I'll go right to the tables here. With the general fund actuals, the beginning fund balance, you see started with the adopted budget of $26.2, and the actuals ended the year at $33 million. And so revenues ended at $67.1 million, expenditures at $64.8 million. You can see that was a gain, revenues over expenditures. However, if you remember the August of 2022 projection that we gave council that we built the budget on, we actually did come in with the fund balance at the end of the year a little bit lower than we predicted. And part of that was a decrease in the underspend and also a decrease in the year-end revenues as well, based on that prediction. So we saw sales tax start to slow down, and we saw some expenditures increase. And as I said, on the property tax, we have right on the budget, that's one of us predictable because we get the county, the information from the county. Sales tax, end of the year, you could see on this chart, we actually added another percentage. You can see percent change actuals over budget, and then percent change actuals over projections. So if we're looking at the projection at 2022, sales tax was down slightly from our projection. What happened at the end of the year is construction started to slow down a little bit on sales tax, and so did consumer spending just a little bit. Business and occupation tax, however, was very strong. However, it's again slightly under that projection, so again, kind of following that term, but it did, if you go from the forecasted budget of $6.4, we did end at $6.9 for that. Utility tax was strong, we saw increases. Some of that was return to work and return to offices, so we saw more activity that increased energy costs, especially in the commercial sector. And we also had small rate increases, so that was about $5.7 million, we're at end of the year. Departmental revenues, this includes recreation, Siglus Community Development was at $10.7, so that was higher than the adopted budget, especially in the parks. Parks finished the year strongly. Thank you, Jeff. And other revenues, including transfers, $10.4 million. That also includes interest, so interest rates were higher, so our investments at the city were higher than forecasted at the beginning of the year. General fund expenditures, you can see that the underspend is still there. So we did fill positions, and by the end of the year, there was some spending, a little bit more than when we came on the forecast, so we did end up, the actual $64.8, the forecast was $63.5 in August. That was because of the filling of positions and increased expenditures as a result. However, you could see most categories were still down from the budget based on those vacant positions and based on kind of ramping back up after COVID. Any questions? Those are the 22 slides. Great. Page 23, we'll skip over the conditions. The revenue projections for '23, and the drumroll story for tonight, you can see that property tax is holding flat. And so this is a little different than we showed this slide in the past, because now we have the two-year budgets. We want to show you, '24 is still a ways out, but we do at least want to show you what our projection is for '23 and our best data right now for '24. Now, keep in mind, most of these items are only, most of these categories, we only have data through June, and so we are lagging a couple months on that data. We'll have another update for you in October, but this is right now, if everything held constant, this is what our forecast is. You can see with sales tax on the '23 projection, it is slightly lower. So what we're doing is we're monitoring construction. So construction has dropped, construction, if you add in all the construction activity we have in the category we have in sales tax, and you include Home Depot, and you include Lowe's, and some of the other hardware stores and the lumberyards, it's about 20% of our total sales tax. So that's the most volatile piece. And so that's what we're seeing right now is a slight decrease in sales tax. However, that's for construction. For consumer goods, consumer spending and online sales, retail sales, we're at about 4.4%, so just under the rate of inflation, so that's still increasing. So we're, again, in three months, we'll come back to you to show you how the year ends. We still do not have the summer construction activity to see if that, that rebounds a bit. So that's what we're monitoring right now. But business and occupation tax, same thing, we're going to see how that lands. Some of that is, again, tied to construction. So right now, that is, the projection is slightly under the adopted budget. And then 2024, you can see there, when you have that growth rate, that's still a question mark how things are going to end at the end of the year for '23, and then going into '24. So utility taxes as well, that's pretty much on budget right now, so about $6.1 million. The same thing for next year, $6.2 million. Departmental revenues, again, are a little bit less than the adopted budget right now, but we're still monitoring this. Community development revenues is the one we're monitoring right now to see how the year ends. There's a couple of items in, such as the Avalon Development, that we built into the budget, that is not going to happen this year. And then also the high school, the high school's going to be pushed out to '25. So we push that more into our long-term forecast after this biennium at this point. The year-to-date expenditures, this is through May 30th, again, we have a lag time with our invoicing and with our reporting, but we were on track as far as we were on budget at this point. And we have presented this slide in the past. I know it's a little busy with both '23 and '24. This is the same slide we used to present last year in our forecast for the biennium. What we're looking at, where to focus on is the '23 adopted budget, beginning fund balance at the top left corner. Again, these figures are un-audited for 2022 right now, but the beginning fund balance is $34.4 million. Our new projection, if you go to the end of the biennium, if you're looking at a two-year lens, would be $22.6 million. So you can see, there was a question, I know from a council member regarding the affordable housing sales tax revenues, that is in restricted revenues. And so the bottom line on the fund balance, you can see ongoing resources because of what we're seeing right now with revenues and the revenue performance, and also an increase in expenditures as we get back towards that appropriation. It's pretty much a flat projection right now, so just about $100,000 under budget, so just a flat projection right now for '23. But if everything held constant, we would be below $700,024. Now, just a caveat, we did build in the Metro Flex, as council approved earlier. This was built into the budget. Again, that small portion for '23, and then the full year for '24 is a one-time expenditure. And we also built in, as an assumption, for police cameras this year in the jail. That's part of that total. And you can see the undesignated fund balance against, the council target is 15%, just under at a 14% is our projection right now. Like I said before, we're going to come back to see how the construction revenues really end at the summer, so we'll have a better picture of how we're going to land in three months when we get to October. The '24 budget, you can see it's 12% if everything held constant right now.
And just a question on that, I'm just doing some quick math. With the undesignated fund balance there of $8.6 million divided by the $62.6 of, is it that for ongoing expenditures, or is it the total of the three of those? $62.63?
It's the total, yes. It goes up and down, that's why we included it.
Yep, fantastic, thank you.
You're welcome. Any further questions on this slide? So we talk about unpredictable revenues, our most unpredictable revenue source in the city is REIT. And again, it's because it's very, very hard to predict the housing market, especially right now in the environment we're in. And so I wanted to show on this chart, actual, and our forecast, the actuals through '22, and the forecast for '23-'24 is the blue line, and the budget is the gold line. So you can see that the correlation is very difficult at times, depending on the year, as far as it's, it's a very difficult revenue to predict. And one of the items now with the volume of home sales down 14.5% or so year-over-year through June and July, that's where this forecast comes from. The biggest story here compared to '22 is we had a lot of large commercial transactions in '22 that we're not seeing in '23, and those are difficult to predict. And the next step, city staff will continue to monitor revenues, and like I said, we'll be back to you in October with those updated numbers from the summer. The focus will be on the revenue outlook, and the performance of construction and community development revenues as we go through the summer. And we're looking at balancing the budget in '24 with updated revenue expenditure information at those meetings. And then we did include the mid-biennial budget update schedule. We've showed this to you once. Again, today is the August 7 meeting. August, October 30th is the mid-biennial adjustment presentation at the council of the committee of the whole. And then November 20th would be the public hearing for the property tax levy and the mid-biennial adjustments. And December 4th would be the tentative adoption of the mid-biennial adjustments. Any questions?
Okay, questions? Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. Robert Hamud, you had previous experience going through a biennial budget with your previous employment in the city of Snoqualmie?
Yes.
This is the first year, the first opportunity we've had to do it here in Issaquah. Is there anything you can share with us that you have seen that is different, or is it a new experience in Issaquah that we can learn from and incorporate into our next budget in '25?
And again, I think it's pinpointing, again, the volatility of the sales tax revenue sources. So again, we delineate already, I think it's very strong here, between one-going and on, one-time and ongoing revenues and expenditures. I think that's very helpful when you look at that lens, which is funding which, to make sure the volatile revenue sources are funding the one-time, and there's enough capacity in the ongoing. But I think we do a good job here compared to other places. Again, the second year of the biennium, we're only 25% into it as far as these numbers. That becomes more unpredictable, but as, as far as having that spending plan and kind of keeping towards that spending plan and that target of where we're going to be revenues and expenditures and keeping that reserve level, I think is very important.
And so as a follow-up, with the uncertainty of that revenue source, are there any recommendations you might be coming forward with, and you don't have to tell us now, but recommendations that you might be coming forward with for the next budget that will enable us to kind of buffer that a little bit more, or anticipate the volatility so it doesn't necessarily permis as much? And just something for you to consider and think about as you're looking at the budget for next, the next budget and the forecasting for it, so that we can at least protect ourselves a little bit more from that volatility?
Sure, we always look at the long-term, obviously the long-term picture, and how the trends are going and what we can fund. So that's something we look on an ongoing basis, and continue to do so going to the upcoming budget as well.
Great, thank you very much for your hard work.
Yes, thank you.
So this is just an informational update, so any questions, comments? Anything else? I will just jump on, I find it fascinating, dug into the numbers, really appreciate getting the information as we come into the October 30th date, and then even before the December 4th. Will we have any more updated numbers for particularly REIT? I know we will for sales tax.
Yeah, REIT is the same thing, so we do get monthly reports. We are, same thing, we're looking at the summer season to see how the peak real estate sales are going through September. I think that's going to be really indicative of how the market is going here.
Okay. And with the previous chart that you had on the general fund balance, with it showing the 2024 projected year-end, ending undesignated fund balance as a percentage of expenditures below our target rate, are, given this is the second part of a biennium budget, and kind of, like you said, there's a lot more uncertainty in that latter half, is it an appropriate practice to make changes so that we stay within the goal-setting for our financial policies? Or is it something where we say we're willing to have a little bit of wiggle room in that and could potentially correct at a later point?
Yeah, that's a council policy decision, of course, but again, we'll have updated numbers and updated recommendations from administration at the October meeting.
And as our policy is the current standpoint, if we didn't change it, then your goal would be to propose a budget that then fits within the financial policies?
That is correct, if revenues and expenditures held constant to this forecast.
Yeah, okay. Any questions, comments? Okay, I think we can just say we appreciate getting the data and all of that, you have what you need from us?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Fantastic. So looking back at the script, the next item of business is committee and regional reports. And we'll start with Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. The August 2 Cascade Water Alliance Public Affairs Committee meeting was canceled. Councilmember Ray will give an update on the Cascade Water Alliance Board Committee meeting that occurred at the last week of July. August 3, I had an opportunity to attend the Port Unplugged event in Woodinville that we were all invited to, had an opportunity to talk to many of our Eastside leaders and electeds on issues impacting us and how the port can be more of an economic engine for our region and perhaps help us be a gateway for environmental tourism in the east, on the east side here. And that ties into the August 8 LTAC meeting, Lodging Tax Advisory Committee meeting, which we held at Hilton Garden Inn in Issaquah, 3:00 PM. I will make sure that I do talk up the Metro Flex idea in my city report and pass on that current news so that organizations such as Visit Issaquah can get that out to their constituents. Want to make you aware of a meeting August 17 at 5:30 PM, the Chamber Board of Directors' Summer Barbecue Meet and Greet will be occurring, August 17, 5:30 at one of the apartment buildings, Atlas, excuse me, right near Safeway. And I will be attending as the council liaison to the chamber, but everyone on the council is invited to attend. You just need to register on the chamber website. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember DeMichele?
Thank you. I have no report tonight. Eastside Human Services Forum will be holding a brief meeting on Thursday, August 10. Otherwise, I have no report. Thank you.
Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. The Kokoni Work Group met on July 26. Kokoni is a kind of salmon that spend their lives in Lake Sammish and the surrounding streams. And so I was there as the chair of the Kokoni Interlocal Agreement Management Committee. We had recently approved the recommended funding levels for programs that are used to support Kokoni, including continuation of a captive brood stock program because the latest returns were not what we had hoped for Kokoni. So that work is ongoing, and I reported to that group that we had funded at that level, and there was a good conversation about what needs to be done and needing to take action that we know is improving the Kokoni returns, and not doing things that we now have evidence are those actions, those management actions that are not contributing to Kokoni conservation. So it was good conversation. There will be a Salmon Recovery Council Management Committee meeting, which is actually a different committee, in August, but that date is not yet set. So we'll report back after that. And there was no August meeting of the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
Thank you, Council President. As Councilmember Joe mentioned, I attended the Cascade Water Alliance Board Meeting on July 26, pinch hitting for Councilmember Joe. There was one item of significance, and actually quite significant on the agenda, and it related to Seattle and Tacoma contract negotiations to meet our longer-term water needs. And so they superimposed the potential contracts with Seattle and Tacoma over our projected water requirements, so looking out in the 50- to 70-year planning horizon. So there is a document that I will send to everybody that I just got on kind of the CWA member update. So a lot of interesting, a lot of interesting planning around water supplies so as not to tap late taps until as late as possible. So that's, that's what we're working for, is to defer that, use of that resource as long as we possibly can by using other sources locally. And that And that concludes my report.
Thank you for the dad joke there. Appreciate it. Councilmember Mertz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protam. The Sound Cities Association is not meeting in August. The Council Services Safety and Parks Committee, however, is meeting in August, and we are at a special time, that is this Wednesday, here at 6:30 in council chambers. And we will be discussing ID 1457 Affordable Housing Capital Funding and Pioneer Program. Since the city began collecting the 0.1% sales tax from House Bill 1590 and receipt of state pass-through funds from House Bill 1406 in 2021, we currently have $2.4 million available for affordable housing. And we're going to have a conversation about some of the things we might do with some of that money. So, should be a really, really interesting conversation. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Hall.
No report this evening.
Great. For my report, the August meeting of the Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board has been canceled. The next meeting will be held on September 7th. And that concludes my report. Now, I'm going to go on to the mayor's report. There will be an executive session this evening, discuss property acquisition per RCW 42.30.110 per N1 per N B. The items are expected to take approximately 40 minutes. No action is anticipated following open session. The 2023 National Night Out Event was a huge success. There were 250 to 300 people out for the event. We saw 30 or more dogs accompanying their owners this year. We had representation displays from Fish Wildlife and Parks, King County Animal Control, King County Guardian One helicopter flew over our event to show their support for the Issaquah Police Department. AFIS influenced the choice. The City of Issaquah Emergency Management Office and Behavioral Health all got involved as well. The Issaquah Police also had all representation from each of patrol, corrections, dispatch, crime analyst, and detectives. There were raffle prizes and pupcakes to celebrate the department's comfort support dog Riggs's second birthday here at the department. And that also made the kids kind of sad that they could not have any of those pupcakes. So, we also had requests from five different Issaquah neighborhoods to have officers stop by their events. Corporal Fulbright and Officer Sims took care of that detail, showing IPD's appreciation for community support. This year was the most successful event for National Night Out we have held. Special thanks to Executive Consultant Katie Larson for all her hard work making the event amazing. Some upcoming community events. The Concerts on the Green in Blue Velvet Groove. Join us Tuesday, August 8th, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. at the Issaquah Community Center for some soul funk and disco cover band. This concert is sponsored by Law Office Lynn Moberly and Rachel Turpin from Madrona Law. There we go. Also, the Global Grub and Groove, Indian Independence Day. Come join us at the Village Green for food, fun, and free entertainment to celebrate culture and community. The Summer Series continues with a celebration of Indian, Indian Independence Day on August 11th at 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Free to attend, all are welcome. Bring a blanket or lawn chairs to enjoy the entertainment. Experience traditional and modern Indian dancing, Indian music, dancing, art, and food. Experience Henna and the game of cricket. This event is hosted by the Issaquah Highlands Council. Gas Station Blues, in partnership with the Downtown Issaquah Association and Washington Blues Society. Join us for Gas Station Blues. This series features notable and talented blues artists every Thursday night from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the historic Shell Station located at 232 Front Street North. And finally, the Restoration Work Party on Dogwood Street. Come join Forest Stewart Stephanie for Restoration Work Party on Dogwood on August 8th at 9:00, I assume, AM to 12:00 p.m. We will be removing blackberry and ivy, those pesky plants. We will provide the know-how, gloves, and tools for everyone to be successful. Closed-toed shoes, long sleeves, and pants are recommended. Don't forget your water snacks and any additional layers to keep yourself comfortable while you're out. Please make sure to register by visiting issaquahwa.gov. And that concludes the mayor's report. Get back over to the script. We have an informational update, ID 1519, the informational update from the International City County Management Association, ICMA fellow presentation. So, I'd like to invite Jimena Chavez Reyes to the lectern and City Administrator Bob Quitz. Before Jimena begins, do you have any comments? Start us out.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor Protam. Jimena's been with us for much of the summer, and I thought it would be a good opportunity as she is wrapping up her time with us this week to have her come and make a presentation on what her experience has been, what she's learned. So, I need to get around so I can take pictures.
All right. Well, it's good to see some of you guys in person again, or to meet some of you guys again for the first time. I've seen you all through the screens, through the live streams, but like, while I said, I'm pretty much giving you guys a recap over like my summer, kind of like what I've learned and just my experience overall. Okay, to introduce myself, I'm a rising senior at Skyline, and I'm planning on taking a pre-law path through university, and I want to go into immigration law. And originally, I was kind of drawn to this position because, like, most importantly, I want to know the system so I can serve the system. Like, I want to know what the people in my community do and like how I can like help them, help the people that I want to help. And equity work is just like really my passion in life, so I just kind of wanted to know more about that for Issaquah specifically. Okay, so one of like my primary roles is that I worked with Christie and municipal court, and so I would sit down on most of the court sessions. And so, I learned that Issaquah serves a lot of communities like Duval and North Bend, outside of others. And just kind of the roles of municipal court employees, something that I learned from that is that people of all backgrounds like can need help. People with like different disabilities, like different languages, like everyone like kind of turns to the city when they need something. And that it can be hard to want to be able to help. People will only have so much power to do so, which I thought was like interesting at this level of government. And then, kind of my task throughout it is that I created a court services pamphlet, which include like information on emergency housing, food banks, court contacts, safe parking, and then a court referral list about substance abuse treatment, gun safety classes, victims' impact panels, and domestic violence treatment, among other things. And then, I also worked with Equity Board, like I mentioned, with Dale. And so, I went to a couple meetings for What Works Cities, WWC. And so, I was pretty much talking about the ways that Issaquah can kind of like grow and change and make, just like the system more equitable, make more like informed decisions. And so, I went for some meetings for the Equitable Decisions Tool, which focuses on data-driven decision-making across all departments. And so, kind of one of the challenges that the Equity Board is facing right now is learning how to bridge divisions and beliefs regarding equity, like what does equity look like and kind of how does it differ from equality? So, that's kind of like one of the conversations that we're having right now. And then, the overarching question is just how do you serve the most people? And how do we do that without compromising like what we already have going on? So, that's what's happening with that. So, I'm excited to see where that takes place. And then, just some other general responsibilities is that I went to senior leadership team, senior leadership team meetings. And so, from that, I kind of just took away that department's work really collaboratively with each other to be efficient and kind of create a more positive work slash community environment. I participated in other community activities like 4th of July and Juneteenth, which were really, really fun. I observe you guys at city council meetings, either in person or through the live stream and other board group meetings. I've met with different department heads to kind of talk about their roles for the city and just what they think their priorities are. And then, ICMA lessons on careers and roles in local government. And pretty much what I learned from that is that there are so many different ways to serve and work for the community. And so, my overall takeaway is that work in local government is really driven by desire to help people in your community, which I get from all of you, that you all seem very passionate about like wanting to like help others. And that can also be very, very challenging, because sometimes people don't really understand how much work local government does for you guys, or for me, I guess, which is like kind of my next point as well. And that local government isn't just made up of city employees, like the community, like community members do so much to kind of like do boards and like keep events running, which like I just thought was really interesting, kind of like coming from a high schooler that like I don't really see how much goes on. But it was really like interesting, and I think just like very impactful to see that like everyone in Issaquah loves it so much that like we all want to do what we can to make it the best place for everyone. And my experience, just like overall, was really positive and very educational. I learned a lot about the ways that I can serve the city after my internship is over, and I just have a better understanding of how much work City of Issaquah does to make my life easier. I feel very fortunate to meet people from different backgrounds with similar passions to me and my experience. The city's work environment focuses a lot on uplifting others, which was helpful to me, considering that this was like my first real job. So, it was nice to have people that wanted to like uplift me and just help me learn. And it just kind of reinforced that civil service really is my passion and that this is what I want to do with my life. And at some point in my career, like either straight out of high school or university, I do want to go back into local government and kind of just finish the work that I started doing here. And that's it.
Questions?
I can ask if, okay. Councilmember Joe.
Jimena, thank you first for everything you've been doing for the city. In particular, I'd like to thank you for all the help that you gave during the 4th of July parade. You were awesome in the sense that you were able to identify the different parties that were coming down the street, and then you even went so far as to find out the names of the pets or the gerbils or the snakes that were in the individual, individual numbered items. So, really appreciate that. It made the parade much more hometown and much more personal for everyone involved. Thank you. The question I had was, as you heard during our discussion about the transportation augmentation group idea that's coming in terms of getting an on-call service, we talked about reaching out to seniors and trying to get them to understand what was happening and what was going on and to get them involved. You're not a senior, but you are a high school student and a young person in our community. What is your experience, or what have you learned about reaching out to high school students and young people in our community so that they find out what is really going on with our city and all the work that you've seen? How do we pass on that message and get people that are in your age category involved?
That's a really good question. I think in my experience, like the biggest thing really is word of mouth, because I think like social media is obviously like such a strong platform, and like I'm on it all the time, like my friends are, like my classmates. But not everyone thinks like, oh, I should go to like the city I live in, like Issaquah, like I don't want to go into Issaquah's like Instagram or like their YouTube. Like, it's not my first thought. And so, honestly, like what I found is that people my age really do want to be involved in the community. They just don't know where to start. And so, it really starts with like getting like an opportunity like this, like seeing kind of like firsthand, like that's where it goes. Because like this makes me talk to like my friends, and then they talk to their friends and like our teachers and our classmates. And so, I don't think it's enough to just like send out like a newsletter, because like people my age, like we're not really interested in like checking stuff like that, in my experience. And so, I think it really is kind of creating like targeted opportunities for like high school-age students or like even younger or older. And like that can be like through like talking to like a principal, like having a meeting with the school. And like when people see kind of the work that like needs to be done, like they will become involved. Like a lot of people my age just don't know how to do that, given the resources that we have right now.
Thank you so much for that information. Much appreciated. And best of luck to you in the next school year, and thank you for your service.
Yeah, of course.
Any other questions? All right.
Where do you go?
Oh.
So, the challenge was what do you get a high school senior as a memento of their work? You know, the idea of a certificate in a frame just didn't seem right. So, fortunately, we have smarter people than me working in the city, and they suggested one of these beautiful Yeti containers. But you will see on it, we have this little logo. It says, "Jimena Chavez Reyes, City of Issaquah, 2023 ICMA Turner Fellow." So, you'll have that. So, as people, when you use that next year at school, people will wonder, what is that on your, on your container? Big, I guess, hold it facing now. Thank you.
Somebody else finally taking the picture opportunity from you, Ollie. Bigfoot? Say hi, ICMA.
I just want to say, on behalf of the staff, we really appreciate having you here this summer. Great addition, and hopefully, ICMA will be able to do this in communities all over America over the next...
Super impressive. Okay, how can we even max out beyond that? We've got a Good of the Order. Does anyone have any items? Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. Just one item really quick. The ACW Representative Wendy Wyker sent out a survey for ACW to all members, and it looks like it went out to staff members as well. I would encourage you to fill it out, give AWC your feedback, and let them know what we think about the job that they're doing. Thank you.
Fantastic. I will throw on a fantastic event down at City Hall from the Police Department for a National Night Out. Really enjoyed going to that, and they were right. The pupcakes were very popular from that event. Upcoming council meetings. The second regular city council meeting in August is canceled to allow for a summer break. Next regular meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 5th. Anticipated agenda items include the Transportation Benefit District Councilmanic Sales Tax Public Outreach Plan. Do we have any other items for Good of the Order? No? Okay. So, we have an executive session this evening. So, the next item of business is an executive session. The city council will now recess into executive session to discuss property acquisition per RCW 42.30.110 per N1 per N B. The items are expected to take approximately 48 minutes. No action is anticipated following open session. Please note, executive sessions are closed to the public. We will now recess into executive session at 9:27 p.m. Ask a clerk to move the city council and any relevant staff into a separate session within this meeting. Anyone who's not part of the closed session will remain in the main meeting. You are welcome to stay in the meeting until it is reconvened.